We're going to call the meeting to order. The mayor is running a little bit late, but he will be here shortly. And we'll welcome everybody. And we'll start with the city manager. I believe you have some presentations for us.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, the Finance Director, Letitia Shelton, is going to give an update on the city's interim financials.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Vice Mayor Wood, City Council, I'm Letitia Shelton, Director of Finance. I'm here to present to you the 10th month, ending April 30th, 2021, financial update. Thank you. One second, forgot my glasses. Okay. As of April 30th, general fund revenues are 714.1 million or 24.4 million more than FY '20. It is expected that the general fund revenues will overperform the budget. This is primarily the result of a higher-than-anticipated consumer-driven hotel meal and sales tax revenue collections. General fund expenditures of 1,078.4 million or 82.2% compared to 81.8% in April of last year. There are no material changes to expenses compared to budget. Following historical trends, it is projected that 95% of the budget will be spent or encumbered by the end of the fiscal year. Next slide. This guide chart tracks year-to-date general fund revenues and expenses comparing budget to actual. As you can see, the actual revenues of 60.1% are tracking approximately 2% over the projected revenue budget of 58.2%. Whereas, actual expenditures of 82.2% are tracking 5.2% below the projected expenditure budget of 87.4%. Real estate tax revenues are 311.4 million, an increase of 15.8 million from FY '20. This is due mainly to a 3.4% increase in assessed values. Personal property taxes were billed in April and are due June 5th. Personal property tax collections during the month of April for FY '21 totaled 2.3 million compared to 2 million at the same time in April FY '20. Other local taxes are 208.8 million, a 7.6 million increase from FY '20. Charges for services are 30.7 million, a decrease of 2.1 million from FY '20. The use of money and property are 3 million, a 2.2 million decrease from prior year. General sales taxes are 57.6 million. This represents an increase from the prior year of 5.7 million. Collections for the month of April totaled 5.4 million compared to the same time last year of 4.4 million. Business licenses are 51.9 million, an increase over the prior year of 0.8 million. Hotel taxes of 6.1 million is approximately 300,000 less than the prior year. Restaurant meal taxes of 32.6 million represents the general fund share only, which is 2.8 million less than FY '20. Here's a two-year monthly comparison of all the major trustee taxes. Here we have a two-year chart of the hotel tax revenues received by the city. This chart reflects the two-year comparison of meal tax revenues received by the city. Through April 30th, general fund expenditures, including encumbrances of 1,078.4 million or 82.2% of the budget, is an increase over the prior year of 55.3 million. As you will note, the increase is primarily due to, as noted, number one, includes the hazard emergency responders and appreciation pay of 6 million, 28.8 million payments in a unit way, and the contingency funding under the city manager's reserve of 10.4 million from the CARES funds. As you all know, the city will receive 136,429,703 dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act in two installments of 68,214,852 dollars. We will receive the first installment this month, and the second installment will be released 12 months from now. Funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024, and all projects for which funds are obligated must be completed by December 31st, 2026. A presentation is forthcoming from the city administration to council to brief you on the American Rescue Plan Treasury's guidance released earlier this week with recommendations also for consideration as to how we will spend the funds. Next slide. This concludes my presentation. Is there any questions from council?
Does anybody have any questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, Bobby Tahan and the planning team will give an update and also work with council to identify the next steps as it relates to the short-term rental ordinances and short-term rental regulations throughout the city.
Well, thank you. Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and Mr. Manager. I'll be providing a quick introduction and hand over to Kevin Kemp, who has been intimately involved with the short-term rental regulations, as well as doing a number of presentations to the public. Purpose of this presentation is to give background information and timelines that were associated with the process, as well as the proposed amendments, and to go over them line by line. There was, in your packets, two times that were provided to you, a summary of the short-term rental regulation changes with the comparisons of the referred ordinance, as well as what the Planning Commission recommended to the city council. On October 21st, just as a kind of a quick reminder, council referred to the Planning Commission for consideration the proposed overlay concept, as well as including the additional safety requirements as requested by Mrs. Henley. On December 18th, 2020, and January 7th, 2021, city staff held virtual short-term rental workshops for the public. We had over 250 residents or citizens sign up with about 200 participating in the virtual workshops and hearing. During those workshops, we did take questions and comments, as well as trying to consolidate those into a frequently asked questions, which is available on our website at www.vbgov.com/str. On January 28th and February, I believe it was actually 23rd, the Planning Commission held two virtual workshops to go over the proposed regulations, to understand what the council referred to them, as well as going over some of the things that they would like to potentially see staff to provide moving forward so that they could take it under consideration. Again, a couple hundred citizens did sign up for those meetings as well to view. There was no comment taken during those meetings because those were workshops for the Planning Commission. The initial date that was sent out that was provided was February 10th for the first Planning Commission public hearing. Because that public hearing was virtual at the time, the Planning Commission decided to defer the item to the March 10th public hearing, which was one that was held virtual and in person. We had over 48 speakers sign up to speak at that meeting. And in total, the city staff received over 644 pages of comments regarding the short-term rental regulations, some being for, some being against. With that, I will hand it over to Kevin Kemp. He'll go over the sheet that has all the summary information for the short-term rentals that was, again, provided to you in your Friday packages. I believe one of them was two weeks ago, and prior to that, about a month before that. That contains the summaries and clearly outlines the differences between the Planning Commission recommendation and the city council proposed ordinance that was referred to the Planning Commission. Oh, I can summarize that. Just so that for the public's awareness, the proposed timeline moving forward is today we will do the public briefing to update the public and the city council on the proposed amendments. Next week, on the 25th, the city council will hold a workshop to go over any other potential changes and discussion about the short-term rental regulations. January 8th, again, the potential timeline at this point is to hold a public hearing with no vote to obtain public comment. And then, January, I'm sorry, June 22nd would be the date of the actual vote of the meeting. That is the tentative schedule that we have set forward, and as we hear comments and other direction from the council, that, of course, can adjust. At this point, I'll hand it over to Mr. Kemp.
Okay. And Vice Mayor to the Members of Council, the reason why I had Mr. Tahan do that was just because we dedicated roughly around a little over hour, hour and 15 minutes, if not more, on this agenda today. So if council has, as this is a very robust topic, additional comments at the end of the day, just know that there is other opportunities next week and week after to have further conversation and dialogue on this matter.
Mr. City Manager, just further in that issue, would you prefer that we not ask? I have some questions. I'm sure I'll have more next week, but I can easily save the ones I have today for next week if you want to not take the time to have questions today.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Tower, I think definitely we need council's feedback today. You know, ideally to be after the presentation, but I do think the intent today, Kevin and Mr. Tahan, is for council to give feedback and dialogue today. Am I correct?
Let's go ahead and let Kevin do his presentation, and then, in the amount of time that we have afterwards, we can discuss.
I'll wait till after.
Just hold the questions till the end, okay?
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Good afternoon. As Mr. Tahan mentioned, I'm just going to go through the proposed ordinance. What you see on the slide right there is all the ordinances together. So to make it easier, we're going to break it up. The first two portions of the ordinance are the actual establishment of the overlay districts. The first of these is the East Shore Drive overlay. The area you see in purple is the area that you, as council, referred to Planning Commission. Planning Commission agreed with this overlay. However, there was one modification. They shifted the southern border north to run along Shore Drive. Additionally to that change, they also discussed a density cap in this overlay of 11.5% of the dwelling units. So the total dwelling units in the district, only 11.5 could be short-term rentals. They also discussed that one rental contract would be permitted per week. The second overlay is the North End overlay. This was, they kept, Planning Commission kept, just as you had recommended. This overlay is essentially the North End overlay as it exists in our ordinance. The only difference really being that it runs down Holly Road when it gets down south of 60th Street. One change that Planning Commission did recommend is that they include the Holly's neighborhood, which is the neighborhood between 49th and 45th Street. So that would be included in this overlay. They also discussed a density cap. The density cap for this overlay was 10.6% of the dwelling units. The same as the East Shore Drive, they recommended that this be limited to one rental contract per week. The last overlay is the Oceanfront Resort overlay. This is the entire OR overlay as it exists. The change that Planning Commission made to this recommendation was that the RT properties be included in the overlay. The map in the center of the slide shows where the remaining RT properties are. There aren't many in the city. There are just a few scattered around, but they are in close vicinity to the resort district, so they recommend that they be included. They also said that two rental contracts per week was appropriate in the Oceanfront Resort. So with that, we get to the real guts of the proposal, and this is the rules and regulations. And, you know, as Bobby mentioned, you have a worksheet, and what I'm going to do is just go through. And these slides represent the item, what the existing ordinance says, what you refer to Planning Commission, and what Planning Commission has then recommended back to you. First item, definition of home sharing. As you know, this is a permitted use. This is a short-term rental where the homeowner is present during the rental period. You didn't recommend any change to the ordinance, nor did Planning Commission. Signs posted on the home. Right now, the ordinance allows for one four-by-four or four-square-foot sign to be posted. Sign must be attached to the home and architectural signs, such as, you know, Sea Palace or, you know, clever names. Those are not included. There was no change that you recommended to the ordinance. Planning Commission, after discussion, did recommend that a sign be posted on the home visible from the street, and the sign must contain a contact and phone number of the owner and representative. And they did mention that this does include Sandbridge District. Registration and taxes, maintained with the Commissioner of Revenue. There's no change in either ordinance there. Summary of city codes, as you know, codes for fire, on the beach fireworks, trash, noise, and parking currently has to be posted in the home. You recommended no change, and so did Planning Commission. The same with trash, keeping trash in automated bins. The insurance requirement remain the same, $1 million of liability insurance, with proof of that insurance having to be provided to the zoning office. Noise remain the same as well, no amplified sound after 10:00 PM or before 10:00 AM. Criteria to be grandfathered. Current criteria is that the properties must have paid their taxes with Commissioner of Revenue prior to July 1st, 2018. City council recommended no change from this. I did mention there that staff had mentioned the idea of an administrative ability to remove grandfathering if the property no longer was a short-term rental for a two-year period. This was considered, but it wasn't brought forward with your referral. Use of accessory structures remain the same. They shall not be used as a short-term rental. Violations also remain the same. Violations, as you know, you recently approved a change, which made them a civil penalty with fines associated. The overlay districts, there are currently no overlay districts. As I went over at the beginning of the presentation, what you presented and what Planning Commission changed, so there's no use for me to repeat that. Requirements for a CUP. Currently, a conditional use permit is required everywhere in the city, except if a property is grandfathered or in the Sandbridge Special Service District. According to what you passed to Planning Commission, CUPs would no longer be considered for short-term rental use as short-term rental use would no longer be illegal use outside of the overlays. Short-term rentals would only be permitted in those overlays. Planning Commission looked at this a little differently and wanted to require short-term rentals in both the East Shore Drive and North End overlays and permit short-term rentals by right in the OR district. They also viewed, thought it was important to have an administrative review and extension of the existing CUPs after a five-year period. Currently, or the ordinance you referred to them, once the CUP ends, because it's no longer legal use, there would be no administrative review, which would allow this use to continue. They thought it was appropriate to, after five years, have an administrative mechanism to allow the CUP to continue. Parking requirement, the current one space per bedroom. Alternate plan can be approved by our department. The change you made, you still had one off-street parking space per bedroom. However, you wanted to allow one space within a garage to be counted, and if there were additional spaces that needed to be added to the site, that they be of pervious material. Planning Commission made really just one change. Instead of one space within a garage, they felt that all spaces within a garage should be counted. So if there's room in the garage, whether it's two-car garage, three, four, that amount should be counted towards parking requirement. The other change, just from pervious till the material shall not be impervious. This is just the way it's worded. It syncs up with our Chesapeake Bay ordinance. Inclusion in the RPP program, this is something that you've approved with conditions on almost every applicable application, and that says when an STR is in a district where the RPP is available, that while it's a short-term rental, they are limited to only two residential passes. Guests and temporary passes are not permitted. Planning Commission did not recommend a change on that. Special events currently, short-term rentals are limited to three events per year, an event being more than 50 people, less than 100, and permits are needed through the special events office. In your referred ordinance, you changed that where no events associated with the STR would be permitted with more people than are allowed at the STR at its maximum density, and that a STR cannot even apply with the special events permit for a special event. Planning Commission agreed with this. Identification of a responsible party. Currently, the STR property has to give the name and telephone number of a contact person. What you did in your referred ordinance is add the requirement that a responsible party must be able to physically respond to the site within 30 minutes. After a long conversation, Planning Commission decided to modify that 30 minutes and recommended that it be physically respond to the site within one hour. Number of rental contracts currently, it's no more than two contracts per seven days. As you know, for, we've conditioned with most every application that's come through, we've modified that to one contract per seven days. As the ordinance you referred was written, it's no more than 52 contracts per calendar year. Planning Commission looked at this a little differently and said that in the East Shore Drive and North End overlays, one rental contract per week; in the OR districts, two rentals per week. For any grandfathered properties or existing CUPs, they would be subject to what rules they were approved under. Maximum occupancy, long story short, right now, it is three per bedroom. You recommended changing it to two per bedroom, with the caveat that persons under the age of 16 shall not be included in the calculation, but in no case shall the number of persons exceed three per bedroom. Planning Commission had no change for this. Time limitations, I briefly touched on this earlier. Currently, a conditional use permit expires after five years. According to your referred ordinance, once it expires, it could not be renewed. Planning Commission felt that there should be an administrative mechanism to review the CUP after five years, and if there were violations found, it could be brought back to city council for revocation. Maximum density is not addressed in our current ordinance or in the one you referred to Planning Commission. As I mentioned earlier, in the two overlays, the East Shore Drive and the North End overlays, Planning Commission recommended a density cap, 11.5% in the East Shore Drive and 10.6 in the North End. So those are the changes in the rules and regulations. What this ordinance does, it just changes the applicable use tables in the zoning ordinance to reflect whatever rules and regulations you adopt that I just spoke of. As Bobby mentioned, there are also the safety regulations that Councilwoman Henley brought forward. These are, first is life safety. Our current ordinance says, to the extent permissible under state law, interconnected smoke detectors and CO detectors, where applicable, are required. What you referred takes that further, and I apologize for the typo on that middle column. I'm just seeing it. There's really no change from the existing ours, but the owner and representative must provide zoning office each year with an affidavit signed stating that the fire extinguisher is installed, where it's located, and that the smoke detectors and CO detectors are in good working order. Planning Commission agreed with this requirement. The second is in regards to deck safety. Currently, there are no regulations regarding deck safety in the short-term rental ordinance. The proposal you referred said that the property owner must have been a structural report to the zoning office annually. It must indicate that all exterior stairs, decks, porches, and balconies are safe, that these must be inspected by a licensed engineer or construction professional, and then the occupant load must be posted on the property. Planning Commission, first of all, thought that annually was too strict a requirement for this report and that every five years was appropriate. They also changed the wording such that the inspection be done by a registered design professional. Everything else they agreed upon. The last bit is the transition rules, and this is just what we have been considering as the use permits have come in, where as of the date of referral, you know, applications will be considered when they come before you with whatever laws are permissible at the time. And lastly, for you and for the public, here's the contact information of the zoning office, who is running the short-term rental program. We have two amazing staff, Will Miller and Summer Peebles, doing most of the work, and they'd be happy to help with any questions. They've really done an amazing job, so thank you, and I'll stick around for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions based on this. Help me out with the density cap, first off. How did you define that for me?
The density cap, when the Planning Commission looked at the density cap for short-term rentals, what they did is they looked at how many short-term rentals were currently in that area. So what they were essentially saying is the number of short-term rentals in that proposed overlay, that number and density would stay. And that percentage was based on the number of short-term rentals divided by the total number of dwelling units we have on record in that overlay.
So there was some question at the Planning Commission regarding short-term rentals that were licensed and unlicensed?
Correct.
So how are you getting to the density number?
I think Mr. Tahan is anxious to...
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Wood, the number was taken from our host compliance software on the first week of November before the Planning Commission started discussing it. We pulled down all the operating short-term rentals, whether legal or illegal at that time, and captured that, and then we mapped it to see where they were located. So that percentage includes, that percentage was derived from all the legally operating and potentially illegally operating short-term rentals.
Okay. So let me go to the logical conclusion of this. So let's say that in this one universe, let's just make easy numbers, there's 100 legal and illegally operating STRs. 50 of them are operating legally, 50 illegally, okay? And you say your density cap is 100. So if somebody comes in with a legal STR, they cannot add that because those 50 illegally operating ones?
No. The cap would be for all those that are illegal. So the next step that we would do, if we proceed, as we proceed with our enforcement process, we would then go cite all the properties that we have that are not registered, or that do not obtain a zoning permit and tell them they need to obtain a zoning permit. And if they do not have a zoning permit, they are not operating legally. Unfortunately, at this time, we haven't had much compliance with those that are operating, coming and submitting their applications for their zoning permits so that we can check to see if they're one-grandfathered and compliant with the rules. I think at this time, Kevin told me today, we have less than 250?
357.
We have 357 applications of the 1,600 that we're aware of that should be grandfathered in the...
Well, I guess, and I still need to follow up, follow through on this. So if somebody comes in and they, in one of these overlays, that they currently has maxed out under this density, and they have a plan and a program to do everything the right way, smoke detectors, parking, all that kind of stuff, they're not operating legally, they're not operating illegally, they're not operating at all, can they come in and add one more?
Yes. This cap only applies to... Yes, this cap only applies to those that are legally operating.
So then, so then the density number encompasses both legally and illegally, but the illegal ones, you replace them one for one?
Correct. The goal is the illegal ones will go away because we, as we staff up and begin the enforcement process.
All right. And that density is based on per overlay or per street or what?
That was per overlay.
Okay. The sign requirements, you talked about this in that requiring a sign, is there a size limit or something like that?
We are looking at four square feet. We are actually playing around. We talked with Public Works about getting some kind of consistent format, but four square feet is what we are thinking would be a good sign.
And then the other thing, there was, there had been talk previously about annual inspections. I didn't see anything on there. I know that when we included the STR fee in the budget, that annual inspections were part of that. Is that not in?
It's currently not in the ordinance that is required. However, that is an initiative that we are taking in the zoning office. We, in addition to hiring some additional inspectors, we have also brought on some temporary staff, which we are planning on using in exactly that capacity.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Kevin and Bobby. I know this has been a terrific burden on you to go through all this, and I hope that the staffing issues, which I think are, impact this so critically, will get solved sooner rather than later. I'm just, have a few questions going through the, going through the list. Let me get to my page here. I had the same question as Vice Mayor Wood on the computation. How confident are you that you can manage, is the planning department, that you can manage this density cap if we, is it troubling to you or is it something you think you can handle?
No, I think it is manageable. I think the expectation needs to be that it will take a certain amount of time to get it to that point where it is a kind of self-sustaining system. As Bobby mentioned, one of the first steps we have to do would be to root out those illegal short-term rentals. That's a, you know, an enforcement effort that doesn't happen overnight, you know? So when you pass the ordinance, if you passed it, it wouldn't, you know, we can't go out tomorrow and have everything in line, you know? We do have to set up that process, and it will take some time to get there. But, you know, as far as keeping, you know, we have those numbers, we have those density numbers, we would be able to calculate those as applications and came in.
If we, if we were to round all these off to 10%, how much impact would it have in terms of the number of units? It just looks strange to me to have one that'll...
It doesn't.
I understand how you got there, but it just looks a little strange.
It does, and, you know, I'd say, as Bobby said, it took into account the legal and illegal short-term rentals. You know, not every short-term rental that is, you know, isn't registered with us will be in compliance. So, you know, I would say that if you took a number like 10%, it would still be indicative of what's out there and workable. You know, of course, without the hard numbers in front of me, I couldn't say for sure, but...
Okay, I got it. Let me ask you another, a question about grandfathering. You said, we've got 375 of the 1,600 grandfathered units across the city that are, have registered with us. Do we have any idea from our software or otherwise, how many are of the remaining 1,300, 1,200, whatever it is, are operating as short-term rentals?
Well, that number are, you know, was pulled from the Commissioner of Revenue, so we assume that a majority of them are operating as short-term rentals. You know, they are, they are registered, they are paying their taxes with the Commissioner of Revenue.
And they're currently paying their taxes as well, so it wasn't just...
A majority are, yes.
And it wasn't just an initial registration? So, I mean, are there some that initially registered and, but have not kept up their tax payments?
There very well could be, but I think that number would be...
Because it seems to me, I mean, they could, what happens if they do that? If they come in and say, okay, I registered initially so I could get in the July 2018 deadline, I wanted to be grandfathered, but I, you know, I haven't paid much attention to the law since, or I haven't used it since. They come in and they want to register then, what?
Well, the way the ordinance is written, there is no sunset on the grandfathering clause, so that would stay with the property. So even if they took a break from operating, they, that property is grandfathered, and they could come and operate under that again.
And if they were perfectly honest, said, well, I've been operating, I just haven't kept up my taxes, the commissioner would say, well, you owe me for the past years that you haven't.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Get up to my next one. The Planning Commission recommended that in the OR overlay that, and I guess in the RT as well, that the CUP be done away with, that these would be by right. What is, what is your, the staff feeling about the by right? I have some anxiety about the ones that are grandfathered and whether we, whether we can regulate them to the same extent that we regulate the CUPs, even after the CUP is granted. I'm not talking about, obviously, it's more of a burden to go through the CUP process, but assuming it's granted, can you talk to me about the equality or lack thereof between the regulatory scheme that we have as far as grandfathered versus, versus CUPed short-term rentals?
Well, if you're comparing the two, right now, our enforcement efforts are kind of hitting on a couple angles. The first is, we are still operating as a complaint-based response, meaning if someone calls in a complaint regarding a short-term rental or an activity that they think might be a short-term rental, we go out and investigate that complaint. In that investigation, you know, we check whether it's grandfathered, we check if it's operating on our host compliance software. So that's one aspect of the enforcement. The second would be to review these applications as they come in to get the zoning record to be grandfathered. And that's something, you know, I would have to guess, you know, we have about 50 of those done. It's something right now that our staff's doing when they have some time on their hands, which isn't frequently, but, so that's, you know, I'm not sure I'm getting at the root of the question, but, I see. Bobby, do you have anything to add?
Yes, that's okay.
You might have understood the question there.
Mr. Tower, so with the implementation of the zoning permit, with the last, with the budget approval and the fee, the, the office has the ability to bring to City Council any of the short-term rentals that may be operating out of compliance, whether it be grandfathered, conditional use permit, or through a zoning permit, forward for revocation of their approval to City Council?
And that revocation, is that tied in any way to the fine system, or we simply have the right to revoke the CUP or the grand, either the, or the grandfathered if they're not in compliance? I mean, we're acting in that way sort of as a judicial, in a way, body, reviewing whether they've, whether they've complied with law or complied with the regulations?
Yes, sir. So what, there is a process spelled out in Section 241.2 that requires notification, public hearing, and for the planning staff to bring forward any of the violations for your consideration as you determine whether or not you will revoke their approval. So there is a process that's spelled out.
And that's applicable to grandfathered and CUPs?
That is correct, as well as with the recent passing of the zoning permit and the fee, those that obtain zoning permits as well.
Okay, can I, speaking of the inspection and your recent thing, what, what do we need to make your inspection process part mandatory and not subject to your, how do we mandate that to the planning department? I'm glad you have the initiative, but I'm concerned about kind of embedding it in the structure of what we're doing. I think it's very important.
We'll have to review with the city attorney's office to double check.
Okay, well, I'd like you to do that if you would, and let me know.
Yes, sir.
And that inspection, is that clearly to cover safety issues as well as any other compliance issues?
That is the plan, is to, as Kevin and I have discussed it, it is to deal with the key safety issues on the property.
All right. And speaking of safety issues, I'll segue into that with apologies for others of you who may have questions. I'm just kind of knocking out the ones I have. Is it, your understanding that our safety requirements are pretty much what we could do under state law, or are there areas of safety compliance that we know of that other, other cities are using, or that hotels are subject to, that we ought to be considering at least while we're, while we're looking at these regulations to upgrade those safety causes? I've become, Ms. Henley is convinced me that our responsibility to make sure that these places are safe places, that our visitors who come here are expecting them to be safe without ever thinking about it. They just come in, they drive all day, they get here, they go out to dinner, and they go to bed, and they never think about safety, and then something happens in the middle of the night. I really, I've had a couple of bad dreams about that, just reading and thinking about that. So I'm, I'd like to clean this up. If it needs cleaning after we get through the basics, maybe we'll do that, but I'd like any, to know any reactions you have about the level of safety.
Absolutely, and, you know, I think the proposed ordinance does take a step in the right direction. We can, you know, by the workshop, sit back and see if the limits can go further on safety. In regards to hotels, we had this issue when it first started as to whether short-term rentals are considered a commercial use or a residential use, and the state building code, I don't know what they had board, I guess, met, and they said that a short-term rental does not constitute a change of use, so it is still a residential use. So that does limit, to some extent, the safety requirements that we can impose. I know when we first started, you guys will remember, we were talking about sprinklers, requiring sprinklers in these larger homes, and that was what was the impetus to that.
And where, and where did we end up with sprinklers?
We did not require them as short-term rentals remained residential use.
Okay, so no requirement, no matter what. And on the fire alarms, in terms of how many and where they're placed, what regulations are we looking at for those?
Currently, we refer back to the state building code, and then what this would do, this proposed ordinance would add the fact that they have to be inspected annually. Right now, as it's written, it would be the responsibility of the homeowner to inspect them manually and submit an affidavit signed to the zoning division saying they're in good working order.
I'm extremely skeptical about the value of that, I'll tell you that. I think that needs, that needs to be included in the inspection.
Okay, I'd be happy to look into this more before our workshop next week.
Yeah, I would, I'd appreciate it if you would. The sound ordinance, no amplified sound after 10:00 PM or before 10:00 AM, how does that sync up with the normal noise ordinance that we have for residential neighborhoods?
Is it 10? Our existing noise ordinance has a decibel level limitation that has to be measured with a noise meter typically from inside an adjoining dwelling. In this case, any noise that was amplified noise that could be detected by the human ear would be a violation.
So it's a more stringent standard than...
Significantly more.
Is there, is there any, so it's, when we say amplified sound, so if you've got a group of six people sitting on a porch with a six-string guitar, that's not amplified sound?
That is correct, and there the only limit would be the noise ordinance limitation.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested to know if anybody knows any, here, within the sound of my voice, knows any practical ways to make a, an even more stringent limitation on sound. I think sound issues in some of these neighborhoods where the houses are very close together is a big issue. I think my last question, no, it's not my last, one more, Kevin, after this. On the violations, what, the civil penalty system that we have now, is the city attorney or the planning department aware of a more effective system that we might consider implementing than the one we have? I'm watching Kevin Ershberger go through the process right now on a house, and the fines are such, they're basically a nuisance for the house in question that rents in, it's a high-end rental, but these are nuisance numbers compared to the rental, nightly rentals in that house.
Right, and I could defer to Mark as far as the amount of the fine. I will say that the fine structure, whereas before it was a criminal penalty, I think staff is very comfortable with the fine structure, making it a civil penalty where we can issue fines versus where we are required to have the 30-day, go through the typical zoning process, which is lengthy. As far as the amount, I'd like to defer to Mark, because, you know, I'm not sure...
Well, we have the remedy of revocation, and we haven't used it yet, but I think as the, as this part of this enforcement, we'll certainly have to use it. If we don't, if we don't use it, we will not have an effective enforcement system in mind. But we don't have that really for the, for the illegal ones, if I understand it. We have to, we have to go through the, continue with the fine process, is that right, Mark?
Well, the other alternative at that point would be to seek an affirmative injunction from the court ordering it not to operate under contempt of court. That would be an alternative to just a fine.
Now, well, wait a minute, let me, let me drop back on that. Did Bobby tell me that we have the revocation rights on the grandfathered ones in the same extent we do with the CUP ones?
Yes.
So we, we do, we do have those, okay. Got grandfathered, I got CUPs, and now we're talking illegal ones. So we have to get a, in, simply an injunction process?
If the fine did not serve the purpose of stopping it, and where it's illegal, I don't, I think probably you would end up going the injunction route because otherwise...
Yeah, I mean, this one's pretty obvious. It's a, it's a cost of doing business for this operator, and it doesn't take a MBA to figure out that it's probably not a pretty ordinary cost of business. It still allows them to make a significant profit on it. How about the one contract, one per week, or however many per week you put in as one a week? Is it, your opinion, that's enforceable from, from an enforcement standpoint?
That is actually, yes, one of the more easily because of our contract with host compliance. That is something that we can have our third-party vendor monitor.
Because I think the reason we put in the 52 a year, well, it's, obviously, one reason is that it's a more liberal standard than one, than one per week, because it allows packing the numbers into the, into the season, so to speak, with multiple rentals per week during the most, the busiest times where, which also may be the most intrusive times in terms of permanent residences. But that aside, I thought we had information... But that aside, I thought we had information from a pretty good source that the weekly one was very difficult to monitor by the hosts themselves, by the Airbnbs, the Verbas, that they have trouble with monitoring the number per week.
Right. And nothing's foolproof, but I will say that host compliance does offer that service to us. They can track it to the best of their abilities. I'm not going to, you know, stand in front of you and say that it's, you know, 100% accurate, but that is a metric that we can monitor.
Right. Well, I think the one a week is a comfort to a lot of folks. Some it's not, but in terms of the impact on the neighborhoods, and I just want to make sure that we're not setting up something that we can't enforce, so that's important to me. Thank you, Kevin, for answering all these questions. And Bobby, I appreciate it. I have more, but I'll save some for next week.
All right. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, if we can go with Ms. Henley and then Ms. Abbott.
Two or three that come to mind. Somewhere back two or three years ago, I remember there was some legal term that I think started with a U, maybe it was uniform or unity, but there was something that said that we had to be the same throughout the city in our requirements on short-term rentals and things of this nature. I'm kind of asking the legal staff, what was that term? And are we meeting that if we have different overlays that have different requirements?
I think we did talk in terms of uniformity. And I think what we said back then is the same thing that I would submit now. If there are reasons why one neighborhood or one area differs from another, you can have differences, but your record needs to reflect that. And I think during the planning commission deliberations, they talked about the differences between the neighborhoods. And I think there are some findings that are set forth in the draft ordinances that attempt to deal with that specific issue.
Well, one of the things that's kind of bothered me as we have gone through this lengthy time is that, you know, we have not always even made our conditions the same for the ones that have been approved. And so I think that's something that we really have to look for and to make sure that we are in compliance, so that, you know, if we are ever tested legally, we'll be able to meet that standard. Another question that's bothered me throughout all of this process is that all of these short-term rentals were originally built as residential, as single-family dwellings. And therefore, they had only to meet the building code requirements for residential dwellings. That's why we, for one reason, we couldn't require sprinklers or things of that nature. And I guess that legal, that state clarification that came along the way that, once it becomes a short-term rental, it does not change, it's still residential. So these new ones that are being built and are being built for short-term rentals are still only having to meet the residential requirements, building code-wise. So this precludes our being able to require some of the kinds of safety things that hotels have to do, for example, and so forth. So we're still stuck with all of that, with the building code and the fact that all of these are still single-family residences. And so in looking to what we can require and what we can't require as far as the safety issues, is there not a problem that we would require the inspections of the decks and that kind of thing? And, you know, maybe one year is often, five years, I think, stretches it. But isn't there a requirement even now in some instances about when decks should be inspected that we can rely on? If we can look at that, I think I've heard some people indicate that they, you know, had to get inspections at a certain time. But we certainly know from experience that they are an issue when you get a lot of folks in a place and they want to get real close. This was before social distancing. Maybe people won't want to get so close anymore. But anyway, that's still one of the things that I think we have to be cognizant of. And, you know, I've kind of heard of some of these houses that, you know, have some pretty frightening things that have maybe not been maintained, but as a residential property, they don't have that inspection. So we're thinking that maybe we would be able to do some inspections so that we don't find that there's a fireplace that's totally unsafe and that kind of thing, that we're going to be able to inspect those things? Are you looking to that?
Yes, that is one of the things that we hope will be the case.
Because I think we really, you know, we really have to offer some assurance. A couple of years ago, there was a family from, I think, Ohio, who went down to Mexico and rented a short-term rental, and they didn't make it through the first night before the carbon monoxide poisoning got to them. We really have to make sure that there is something, some kind of inspection if we're going to allow these, and we have certified them and so forth. So I will just mention that as one of my longtime concerns here. And then the other question, and this has come to me from different folks who feel like we're maybe not doing everything just right. How do we meld what the commissioner of revenue does in the fact that he's collecting the taxes and what we are now going to be doing with the registration and collecting the fee and then making sure that we are in compliance? How are we melding these two things?
Well, currently, they are independent processes of each other. You know, when a person goes to get, goes to the commissioner of revenue to register and get their business license and such, you know, commissioner does make them aware, sends them over to zoning for our review. That's how we do catch a lot of properties. So there is that check, but as far as going to find these properties, the enforcement efforts are independent of each other. So there is some amount of information sharing. The commissioner of revenue does send us figures every few months on their short-term rentals. But that's about, currently about as much melding as there is.
Well, you know, just some things that I guess I've read in emails and so forth that they feel like we're not doing all of it right to make sure that we don't have some kind of conflict going on, or we're collecting the taxes, but we're not maybe doing everything else we need to. And as far as the, well, we have been using 3-1-1, I think, to, for neighbors to register concerns. And so with the new system that we're thinking we're going to be using, how will that work?
With the new system, we will have a dedicated phone number, which our thought would be the sign that planning commission was recommending be posted on the building. We could post that number. And what that number is, it will be dedicated for short-term rentals. It's monitored 24/7 by host compliance. And what happens is when they get the call, they take the details, and an email gets shot out immediately to whoever we have assigned to that. So currently, it is our short-term rental inspectors, our field supervisor inspector and myself, you know, get an email.
And I know early on, one of the things that we talked about that was discounted along the way was, you know, it was a three-times-and-you're-out kind of thing. Do we have a thought for how we're going to monitor this, that we're going to say, "Okay, Mr. Short-term Rental Owner, we have too many complaints. We're going to revoke your permit"? How are we going to get to that point, or will we get to that point?
Well, currently, without committing to any kind of number such as three strikes and you're out, what we are doing, every complaint we get is logged in as a separate complaint. So we can pull up an address, and we can have a complete history of how many complaints. Now, we do have a few properties that have had, you know, rather serious complaints, as I'm sure you're aware. So then the question does become, you know, at what point should we bring it back to you? And I think, you know, on top of just staff's view on that, I think, you know, guidance in that aspect would be helpful as well. Because, as you know, the problem's always been, you know, three times leaving your trash out isn't necessarily the same as, you know, three parties where there's gunshots. We don't have a set number yet. So that's, yeah, I bounced around and didn't answer your question, but, you know, it's a very difficult question to answer.
Well, we are getting there. I'm a little encouraged that we are making progress, and I will say that. And I think it's not something that's insurmountable, but we seem to be getting there. But I do know, very, very early on, I just remember those earliest times that Karen Lasley and Bill McCauley and I went to the San Bridge Civic League and talked about this. And we said, "We don't want to adopt anything that we can't enforce." And so I think the key to everything is enforcement. And, you know, maybe we're going to get there with what we've recently done with the budget and with all you're doing. But I really think, you know, that kind of has to be our goal, might be a laudable goal. That's going to take us a while to get there, but I think that's important. And I think anything that we do adopt, we have to kind of measure, really, can we do this, or is this something that we're not going to be able to? But just one more thought. Have we had any problems with the home sharing? I've not had any complaints, but is that working okay?
That is working absolutely just fine, to my knowledge. I share your sentiment. I am not aware of any complaints with home sharing.
Well, that's something. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. I think we are on the right track. Ms. Abbott and Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I wanted to first get clarification on something that Councilman Towers said. It kind of made me wonder, in terms of what we're planning on doing with the inspectors that were budgeted for this cycle, is the intent for them to be in the homes of these short-term rentals on a regular basis, making sure they're complying? Or is the affidavit our primary, how we're going to primarily rely on whether or not people are in compliance?
Well, as the ordinance was referred down, it would be a yearly affidavit. What has been expressed through this process is the desire to have some sort of annual inspection where inspectors could actually verify these requirements. Now, you know, as we bring staff in, that is something that is achievable when, you know, Councilwoman, you're talking about enforcement efforts that can be done. You know, an annual inspection would be something that is very, you know, we can do that.
Of the inside of the house?
I believe so, yes. Yes, if they have that zoning permit.
But as it's written right now, we are not going into anybody's houses.
As it's written right now, the ordinance only requires...
The affidavit?
The affidavit.
Okay.
It doesn't require an annual inspection specifying.
Well, for the purposes of feedback in our conversation, I have a lot of reluctance to sending an inspector inside someone's house, considering it is a residential area. And I'm not even aware of an insurance company that inspects the inside of a house. I get going out and making sure they're complying on the outside and making sure the exterior of the structure appears to be safe. But I think that an affidavit probably covers our liability in terms of making sure that somebody is following the rules, but I realize that might be a difference of opinion on that. I did have another question about our software. One of the things, one of the feedback that I got a lot of through our budget cycle was that host compliance may not be the best software out there. And so I'm curious, what software is available? What was our process in selecting them? Did we just pick the best price? Did we, was it, how did that work? And what are our options? Because I'm understanding that there's a lot of software available that maybe we could use a better one.
There are a lot of software available. I can tell you that the process of how we came in with host compliance is because the commissioner of revenue had secured a contract with them. So with that contract, it was, you know, at least in that initial stage, is there was an ease of entry into planning, whereas the, you know, what they have set up for the city of Virginia Beach was already there.
Okay. So do we know when host compliance tells us that a property has been rented? Does it differentiate between when a property owner has blocked dates because they don't want to rent, or as opposed to the property is being rented? Do we have that distinction on the software?
I cannot speak with certainty to that. I can definitely get an answer for you.
Yeah, that's...
If Will or Summer were here, they could knock it out like that. But I'm happy to give you that answer.
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the questions I got a lot of feedback on was, do, does the software differentiate between that? Because then potentially, when people, particularly when applicants are coming before us for their conditional use permits, and we're saying, "We believe your property's been rented", if the information we're getting is from a software that can't differentiate between an owner block and whether the property's being rented, I'm interested in knowing how that process works. And if that's a conversation we need to have a later date, I'm happy to make the time for that. The other question I had was in relation to the complaint calls. Can, at a later date, can we get a list of all of the calls and complaints that were filed through the 3-1-1 and 9-1-1 last year, or actually up until this point, like an aggregated list?
Yes, I will see what we can throw together in regards to that. I, you know, I will tell you in regards, this just reminded me, in regards to coordinated efforts, you had spoke earlier about coordinating with the commissioner of revenue. We're also working with, coordinating with the police. They've been very helpful in 3-1-1. So we are, the long-term, you know, goal is to have that system all in place where that information is shared, and we have it in one place where, you know, I could give you a number right now without researching. But I will definitely go back and see what we can put together for you.
Okay. And then the last comment I had was about how we are, I guess, effectively grading violations. I think it would be helpful for us to try to come up with some kind of rubric in where, you know, maybe you score a violation, and trash being left out repetitively equals X score. Because I do think you're correct. I think there is a difference between having your trash not taken care of, because that could just be the symptom of a bad tenant in that moment, versus, you know, if there's, you know, habitual parties or something like that. That is different, and one is safety and one is nuisance. So I think that it would be beneficial if we could maybe weight that so that there is more direction, particularly for you all, because, you know, as many of us have said, enforcement is a big part of this. But, you know, I don't like the idea of an arbitrary number either, like, oh, three strikes, you're out. I think we'll get two into the weeds of who counts on that, and so that's just some commentary I have. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Just listening to these comments, I guess the most important thing is we need to remember that every problem that we've heard from on these has been an unregistered one that is not managed, that, you know, it's just somebody who's just renting it out and not screening anybody, and that's where all the gunshots and craziness occur. I think that people who follow the rules, who go through the process of a CUP, who hire a professional management company or treat it like a business, you know, they're in it as a business to make money. And so I think that's important to kind of differentiate those. And that's why I have the issue with the issues where you're including the illegal ones versus the legal ones. And I think that's something that we need to dig a little bit deeper into. You know, with respect to the inspection piece, I understand where Ms. Abbott's coming from, but I would also tell you that every single rental property, virtually every single rental property in Virginia Beach, a long-term rental is supposed to be inspected every couple of years anyway. And that's part of what the landlord is supposed to do. So, and other places do that. Other places inspect their SDRs, and it's an annual inspection they go through, and they check smoke detectors and fire extinguishers and things like that. And they're in and out in just a few minutes. It's not that big a deal unless they come in and see big problems, and that's another another issue. But again, I don't think we're going to have that problem with people who are doing this as a business as opposed to people who are just doing, you know, doing, doing the stuff like we've had problems with. All, all that being said, I kind of want to go circle back to, you know, my, my idea on, on this as, as it pertains to, to my district. From my perspective, I want to remove the Shore Drive East in its entirety. I don't want that included. I think I made that, made that very clear. And, and I've spoken with the civic leagues repeatedly up there and, and those groups, and I made that comment again on Monday night, I think it was, last Monday night, about this. So, so I, from my perspective to the council, I don't want to have Shore Drive included, at least my portion of Shore Drive included. And I won't speak with, for Mr. Jones, but I'm pretty sure I know where he is on this. And I'm still working through the issues on, on the north end, but I just, I just want to, just for my colleagues, to say that I'm, I'm still not supportive of having it, having it up at that end. And these other issues, I still need, I still need to flip through, but, but that one, I know for sure where I am.
Hey, Ms. Woodin.
Thank you. I, just in some of the comments that I've, and feedback I received, I am receiving feedback about the quality and fairness of where a short term will, will go, or is it, does it fit in a certain area? And if it doesn't fit here, why doesn't it fit there? And if it fits here, why? So I'm kind of getting that feedback, which kind of leads me to the thought about key stakeholders being at the table. Are we having all the key stakeholders at the table considering everything? You know, there are some professional organizations out there who know how it's done, who have data and information that might be quite helpful to us, you know, and those who are studying the process. And I think we should probably really make some use of that valuable feedback and information and data. And then it also leads me to the third part of my comments, which is, how, how are, how do we know, given the process that we've been working in, how do we know how well we've been doing? Have we been making a horrible impact? Has it been good? Is it indifferent? Is there a mechanism that we can use as a body to kind of see how, I guess, all of our decisions have impacted the city, good or bad? You know, whether that's a survey and finding out. But those are things that I do, you know, kind of question and want to know because I, I think as a whole, if we would reach out and kind of garner that information, we'd get a, a really good perspective in moving forward in the process. So those are just my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, just want to thank you. There obviously a lot of hard work went in here, and I think, as Ms. Henley said, we're starting to move in the right direction. But I think the important thing is that as we create a system for such a complicated problem, is that we make this as user-friendly as possible. As the Vice Mayor Wood said, you know, you know, we got to, you know, you know, people will be more willing, I think, to come into compliance, you know, if there's a workable system. And, you know, and I think that would be the end result of that. But once again, thanks again, and, you know, I think the comments and the questions, you know, that council members brought forward, you know, but, you know, we're very, very on the mark. But once again, it was very complicated that you and Bobby and Planning Commission and all, all of us have been dealing with for Mr., years now, right, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to move forward with council discussions, and I just want to thank Vice Mayor Wood for filling in for me. The Suffolk State of the City ran a little longer, but does anybody have any discussions or initiatives they'd like to talk about? Any comments? Yes, Mr. Balucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like just to take this opportunity to recognize Karen Thomas. Karen, would you stand, Ms. Thomas, would you stand for a moment, please? Thank you. You may recognize Ms. Thomas because she's been with us for, for several months now in joining us through both the informal workshops as well as the formal meetings on behalf of Representative Elaine Luria. And I don't have to emphasize the importance to anyone in this room about the, the partnership that local governments have with federal and state leaders. And I think it's a tribute to Congresswoman Luria, as well as to Ms. Thomas, that she's here in person and she's here to make herself aware of what we're discussing as a council and how we can work together more fully to serve the people of Virginia Beach. So I want to thank you, Ms. Thomas, for being here, and I just wanted to make the council and the public aware that she's here week after week after week. Thank you.
And thank you very much for participating. Once again, local government can't do it by itself. You know, we are, have to have those positive relationships and bridges with the federal, state, and the local governments coming together. And there's a lot of credit about our ability, even as a region, to move forward through the COVID, you know, the way we did. But I think it was that mutual cooperation that helped. Mr. Balucci, thank you very much. Mr. Tower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a comment about the critical shortage of workers in the resort industry right now, what our hotel and restaurant workers are facing. There may be other industries too, but those are ones of which there are many in my district. And I'm very aware of how, how they are not able sometimes to even sell all their rooms or use all the space that they're allowed to, even, even with COVID restrictions, or have to close a night because of staffing. Those businesses run on tight margins, and those closures or fail, or inabilities to use their facilities are painful. I believe my, I'm no economist, but I do believe that the Recovery Act funds that are going to people that are supplementing their unemployment are a good thing and that they will result in the, in the long run, and I, or the intermediate term even, I'm not wor, I'm not worried that they're going to affect unemployment. In the short run, however, I am concerned. And the short run is our resort season, which is gearing up right now heavily. It's already well underway. We're in May. And I just want to say, I am certainly hearing and considering, talking about some kind, whether we're or not, the city has a, could have a role in some kind of return-to-work bonus or other system that overcomes whatever resistance there is to people going back to work. I can't measure it. I don't know how real it is, but I think a number of people do believe it's real. There are certainly some bills in Congress, which I have not studied. I don't know. But anyway, if, if there is a, a need for that, and I believe that, that there may be, then I may be bringing something to you more substantive about what we might be able to do about it. And I'll talk to staff about it on my own, but I just wanted to kind of alert you that that might be in the works. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, Mr. Tower, that is a definite problem. I did have a conversation with the governor last Friday. And, you know, the good news is that we're going to be opening in time for Memorial Day, but in speaking to some of the restaurant owners, it's a mixed blessing because they're having trouble finding the staff to adequately, you know, function in a reasonable way. You know, I did speak to a couple of the mayors already. We may, I'll talk to Julie about this later, consider doing a public service announcement, encouraging people to come back to work or something along that line. But once again, you know, perhaps a number of the states have, you know, declined further, you know, compensation for those that are working out through September. I don't think we can afford to wait till September, you know, before the workforce starts ramping up again. So, you know, I think, you know, perhaps, you know, Mr. Tower, you and I could maybe, you know, schedule a call with the governor to see what might be be able to, or even on the, you know, our friends on the federal level, you know, what can be done. Maybe a three-way, three-party with the state, federal, and local. I'd be glad to include you on that call, Mr. ...
Yeah, well, I certainly, like Ms. Bryan, maybe could, could look at the conditions of the federal grants that we know about already. I'm sure some of them we don't, and there'll be further ed guidance coming out, but what we know about, about what options we might have as a city, and certainly I'd want to coordinate with the state as well. I'm hoping the state's going to do something about it.
Yeah, Mr. Tower, let's try to make that a priority for this week. Okay? Anyone else? Ms. Henley?
I do, and goodness, Mr. Moss isn't here, so I'm going to steal his thunder. We, and I can't believe I'm saying it, but you know, it's really dry right now. We need a rain. But it will rain some more. And if we're going to have a referendum this fall on the flooding issues, I'm just looking to the staff to, to say, this is something we kind of need to get into our, our...
Workflow.
Agenda and our workload. We've got, you know, we're doing short-term rentals, and then we have the whole thing with the voting that kind of exploded on us. And at the same time, we need to really be working on, on, on that referendum issue. So I was just, I, I know that we have talked about the possible items that are in it, but now that we've done the budget, we're looking at this money that we are going to be getting. I don't ever see flooding listed as one of the things that it can be used for, but I certainly hope it can. But I think now that we've done the budget, we really need to start looking at this because it's going to be here, that deadline for a referendum is going to be here before you know it. And then we start with early voting and everything to, in order to really do the public involvement that we need for this, because I think this is going to be one of our most critical things that, that we, we've done, and we want to be very positive and be able to really get the, the word out and, and the feedback in from people about what they think we ought to do. So just to keep it on the agenda here.
Okay. And if I could request, Mr. Dehaney, Mr. Stiles, if we can, you know, come together and, you know, figure out the mechanism about what we, exactly what we have to do, and then perhaps we can make this a pointed discussion for our meeting next week, if possible.
And Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Henley, we have it scheduled to start presenting to council on that in, in June. You know, so we'll bring the information on the bond referendum in June, and we'll also bring a conversation about the American Rescue Plan dollars in terms of getting feedback from council on how they want us to prioritize that. And stormwater is one of the eligible uses of that fund.
How was that for rapid response, Ms. Henley? Good stuff. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready for the agenda review, Mr. Wood.
Okay, under ordinances or resolutions, everything other than two could be on consent, so items one, three, and four can be on consent. Is everybody okay with that? And we have speakers on item two. Anybody opposed? Okay. Under planning, Ms. Barnes, I saw that we had item 11. Do we have an additional speaker on that or not?
The last update I have is the one you received.
The one I've got? Okay. All right, so under planning, right now, we don't, hold on. Just got an email. Give me a second. Under planning, item J1, Martha White, Stephen K. Finger et al., for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, Ray create two lots with one lot not meeting the agricultural district allowable density requirements at 6332 Pocahontas Club Road in the Princess Anne District. Ms. Henley? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that can be on consent.
Okay. Item two, Festival LLC for a special exception for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code, Ray outdoor dining entertainment, outdoor recreation, commercial parking lot, open air market, recurring special events on site with various outbuildings, structures, and signs at 712 Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District.
Okay.
Okay. Item three, Crowell Investment Group LLC, modification of proffers, Ray additional option of exterior building material at 1529 Taylor Farm Road in the Rose Hall District.
It's okay for consent.
CRP, GREP, Overture Chesapeake Owner LLC, CFCLLC, for modification of conditions, Ray freestanding monument sign at 3399 Ocean Shore Avenue in Lynnhaven District. I'm fine with that. Item five, North Landing Beach RV Resort and Cottages, Virginia Beach LLC, for modification of conditions, Ray non-commercial marina at 161 Princess Anne Road. Princess Anne?
That is fine for being on consent, but I do have some concern that, you know, this is getting to be extremely successful, and that's great. And I, I talked with Mr. Tahan this morning about making sure that we understand what the existing guest policies are in place at the campground, which would allow for people to attend events there. And just so we have that clarified, then it's okay on consent.
Okay. Item six, City of Virginia Beach for change of zoning from R5D Residential Duplex District to R7.5 Residential District, Ray re-subdivide and incorporate into existing lots of adjacent property owners, 206 Bob Lane in the Beach District. Mr. Tower?
For many objections, so it's okay with me for consent.
Okay. Item seven, Robin Gautier, CEO on behalf of Samaritan House Incorporated, Catholic Diocese of Richmond, Virginia, Episcopal Diocese of Southeastern Virginia for conditional use permit, Ray group home at 1593 Lynnhaven Parkway in Centerville District. Ms. Woodin?
I want to ask for deferral on this. There are, I would like to have some conversation with the person opposed, who was in opposition. I understand that there has been some change in his position, but he is in charge of the school that's next to this proposed application. And there's some other areas I want to make sure I have all the information needed before this goes forward, so I want to ask for deferral.
For how long?
Thirty days.
Okay, so what's 30 days, Ms. Barnes? Does the applicant know?
Yes, I, I did reach out to them and, and as a courtesy to let them know.
The applicant has signed up to speak.
And she mentioned that she would.
Thank you. So 30 days would be the second meeting in June, so the 15th, June 15th?
Okay, but does, if the applicant's going to speak, then we have to pull it, right? Has the applicant consented to this, or does the applicant still wants to speak?
I, I spoke with her yesterday, and she said that was fine, that if I asked for deferral, but she said she still wanted to be here to speak.
All right, then we're going to have to pull it. Okay, we'll have to hear it.
I ask a question, Mr. Ray.
Yep, yeah, Mr. Jones?
Do you know, Mr. Stiles, has this come under the federal guidelines by any chance?
The federal guidelines for, I'm not sure I'm following you, sir.
Well, in the past, we...
Okay, I think your mic's off.
In the past, we've had these kind of applications, and we've been told that there's federal guidelines that prevent us from denying them, and...
I think those are usually substance abuse recovery, and I don't think that's the subject matter here. Am I right about that?
No.
Yeah, I don't think those, the guidelines that you're thinking of are applicable to this particular application, so...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
And just, I just want to make sure as also that I'm clear, I'm not trying to pull it or defer it to deny it. Just want to make sure I have clarity and all the information needed to approve such an item, especially in close proximity to a school.
Right, but if the applicant, applicant wants to speak, then we have to hear it.
Sure, they, sure, that's fine. That's no problem.
So you make the deferral motion afterward?
Right.
Okay. All right, item eight, Serza Enterprises LLC for conditional use permit by motor vehicle sales and rentals at 6056 Indian River Road, Centerville.
Sure, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Wood, I just wanted to note, I just realized I have a conflict on that one. I'm just...
On this one? So you'll be abstaining?
I'll be abstaining.
Item nine, A&amp;G Auto Sales, GNA Properties LLC for conditional use permit, Ray motor vehicle sales and rentals at 604 Newtown Road, Kempsville. Ray Motor Vehicle Sales and Rentals at 604 Newtown Road, Kempsville. All right. Virginia Beach Winery LLC, Siphon Development Company Incorporated for conditional use permit, Ray Craft Winery at 1064 Lynn Haven Parkway, Rose Hall.
Okay for consent.
Derek and Nicole Howell for conditional use permit, Ray Outdoor Recreation Facility at 5409 Blackwater Road, Princess Anne District.
I haven't heard from anyone other than the original person who complained in reading that, but he hasn't contacted me. I've looked at it and I'm fine with it. I think with the conditions that will protect him, but I haven't heard.
And he hadn't signed up, right? Okay. Okay. Item 12, City of Virginia Beach Ordinance to Amend City Zoning Ordinance, Sections 207 and 232, Ray distinguish between an administrative and standard review process and determine associated fees for communication towers, small cell facilities, and building mounted antennas. Is everybody okay with that one? Anybody not okay? Okay. Item 13, City of Virginia Beach Ordinance to Amend City Zoning Ordinance, 301, 401, 501, 601, 701, 801, 901, 1001, 1501, 1521, 1531, 2203, and Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code Sections 5.2, 5.2.16, 5.3.17, Ray Communication Towers, Small Cell Facilities, Building Mounted Antenna, and Temporary Towers. Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Did that last one all in one breath. Good stuff. Yeah. All righty. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters: consultations with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consideration or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7 regarding Holloway et al. versus City of Virginia Beach. And personnel matters: discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1, and that would be council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, task forces, and appointees. Do I have a motion? A motion and a second. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss is absent. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson is absent. Councilmember Woodin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
I'm to zero.
Okay, at this point, let's recess into executive and let's take about a 10-minute break.